What separates us from our competition is we serve 100% American ground beef. All our produce is cut fresh daily. I'm here, come see us, give us an opportunity to hardly eat.
We'll call our finance meeting to order. Tax sheet is in there. We're up a little over $4,000 from last July in city and a little over $2,000 in county. So our sales tax is still running pretty good. We're up over what we anticipated and what we were last year. The mix sheet is a thank you. But y'all did some drainage work and the citizens signed a little petition to thank y'all for doing that. I think it's around, it's cleaning out a ditch around the junior high school. The only other things that I have, I sent y'all the mandatory yardage documents. I'd really like permission to go ahead and get those out. A lot of the things that I was concerned about Luke said that we'll just do in the contract, like making sure we determine who's going to pay the sales tax and how long the term of the contract's going to be and how many times we can roll it over. He said all that can go in the contract. The general specifications, which was the big document, he didn't change anything there. The instructions to proponents, he did change the way it was bid because we have had a company come and they want to bid yard waste and they also want to bid containers. And he said because, he just wants to make sure everything's set out plainly in the specifications because he didn't want any questions when the bids come back. So that's why he put that in there. But I don't know if y'all want to, I had anticipated getting them out this week, bringing them back in the 25th so we'd have them for September. But I don't think that's going to be possible because I know the people from Republic, he said he needs probably a good three weeks after he gets the specifications to get all his stuff together and get a good solid bid back in. I know Wayne Rathbun, who was with Waste Management, is now working with Jim Douglas and he's interested in bidding on behalf of Mr. Douglas again. And I assume Waste Management will bid again. So I think we'll have at least three bidders. And...
So you think they'll be October?
Well, the contract, the termination of the contract is October 31st. We should start the new contract November 1st. I'd hoped to give us the whole month of September to look at the contract. But I, I think if we can get it in by the middle of September, then we're, that's only going to cut two weeks off. But I really wanted to have two good meetings to look at it, but I don't think that's going to be possible. No, that's why he put them as alternate options. He wanted, well, they're not really alternate options. He put, you bid it this way and if they don't want to bid that part, then they need to put, "We can't provide that" or whatever. He just wants to make sure the playing field is even because of some problems we've had in the past.
So all one of the three is indicated in the thing?
Well, I mean, Waste Management talked about yard waste at one time and they also talked about containers at one time, but they never, well, we really haven't bid it since that time. So, you know, I don't know if that's going to be a viable option or not.
Which they container to come out like with all of them and pick it up? So that's a lot more expensive?
I mean, I think, well, what they tell me, what Wayne and Mr. Merk have both told me is that the initial outlays work, but in the long run it saves the city money and it saves, you know, saves, helps them keep their costs down. But I don't know, I thought Luke would be here. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know what y'all, what y'all's pleasure is. But if y'all want to look at them another week, that's fine. But I do need to get something out in the next week or two. It's just imperative that we bid it out this time.
The way he had it lined up was saying that they could bid all that. And just like you were saying, certainly have those particular things.
Right.
That might only be actually, I think, some of that money, there's some things we don't want.
Right, right.
I'm like you, that's what I'm going to do. This is all possible. They can choose what you want.
But I think, I think the thing is he wants them all to have the opportunity to bid it or not bid it. You know, he doesn't want one...
Equally.
Right. He doesn't want one of them coming back and saying, "Oh, well..."
"We didn't bid..."
Yeah, "We didn't bid yard waste because we didn't know how you wanted it." So he wanted it all included.
Although he wants to bid one time.
Right. Yes. And so do I. But anyway, if y'all want to look at them, that's fine. If you want to give me the go-ahead, that's fine. You know, if you want to put it on the agenda for Monday night, give y'all another week to look at it and then vote whether to, I don't know what you want to do.
Does it require the, would it require action of the full council in order to go out for bid?
I didn't think it did. I thought, you know, it could be recommended. I thought y'all could just tell me, "Go ahead and put it out for bid," but some things...
That's the question, what are you going to put out for bid? Which one of those are you going to pick? You going to pick yard waste or...
No, they're, they're all in there. They're all in there.
Okay.
They're all in there, but they're listed as different options.
Right, they need to have a different option. Actually, they didn't want, that's what I was saying.
So they'll have a different price for every option?
Right.
I mean, it looks good to me.
So it would be like, you know, so much for just regular once-a-week pickup.
Like we've got...
So much for once-a-week pickup with containers. So much for once-a-week pickup plus a monthly option for yard waste. You know, it would just, everything would be...
If it doesn't have it, if it doesn't require council approval, I would probably go ahead.
He also sent me, that I sent to you, about an annexation of eight acres. I have also talked to this gentleman and I really don't know what to tell you because I thought Luke would be here.
One question I had looking at what they're saying, it appears that one piece of property is only contiguous if the other piece of property comes in. It doesn't actually join Melbourne or the...
Well, the, okay, the individual that's wanting to annex, his, he owns property in the city and in the county. It, I mean, and everything else, I mean, if we annex him, everything else is contiguous. Isn't that right, Steve?
That's correct.
I don't think the other parcels are contiguous if we don't annex that piece. But he came to see me and I told him that his first step is to apply to Rockport for detachment because, you know, we, I mean, we can't do anything until Rockport's released that property. I don't know what Luke...
Put in six acres in Rockport.
Yes. So I'm not sure what he, I don't know what he wanted to talk to y'all about. I think...
Is the property contiguous to the city?
Yes.
Two of their sixes.
Yeah, six, six of the acre, well, six acres are in, no, two acres are in Melbourne. It's, I mean, it's his house, but I think it's, either his house is in Rockport or his...
The house.
The house is in Rockport. But he, the rest of his land is in the city of Melbourne. And then the other two parcels of property are across the street and they're just contiguous to the part that's in Rockport right now.
I assume all these property owners are working together on this?
I think so. I think so. But here's the thing that I don't know. He doesn't know where to go. He doesn't know what to do. I would not mind typing his letter to Rockport for detachment. But if that's going to get us in trouble, then I'm not going to do it. You know, because I know that when 770 first came in, we did that a few times. People would bring their stuff to us and we'd copy. And then when the lawsuit started, they said that we were going out recruiting people to detach from Rockport. I just don't want that to happen. I don't, you know, even though he came to Steve and Steve brought him to me because we didn't know what to do and we sent him to Luke. And so, you know, I mean, yes, if they want to be part of Melbourne, I want to help them, but I don't...
He has that option if he's contiguous to the city limits, to our city.
Yes.
That's his, that's his choice.
Right, right.
So, I mean...
He can send them a letter.
He can just send them a letter saying, "I'm annexing into Melbourne," and that's the end of it, should be.
Yeah.
He's got, sure, he's got the option.
He's got the option to be well, that's...
But if he doesn't do his papers, that's, that's the problem. If he doesn't do his papers right...
You don't want to go there again.
If he doesn't do his papers correctly, then if they sue him, he doesn't have a leg to stand on.
I don't understand where the lawsuit would be though. If he chooses to annex into Melbourne and part of his property is already in Melbourne, I don't understand. How could you pursue that in a lawsuit and expect to win?
Why don't Luke just take care of it anyway?
I think he's just, I think on this one, I think what he was wanting y'all to tell him is if, if this gentleman decides to pursue this and he gets detachment from Rockport, is the city, is the city willing to accept him, knowing that we're probably going to get sued? I think that's what he's saying.
Haven't we been down this road before?
Yes, we have.
And tell me, but we won.
Yes, but not with Luke.
Every time.
What does municipal lead say?
I don't know that, I don't know that he's called them. That might be...
I don't know that we've ever turned down any property, anybody that wants to annex into the city. I'd say, yes, we'll take him with open arms.
And well, and see, that's kind of what I told him when he came to my office. And so when I got this, I was like, ooh, you know, because I told him, yeah, you detach from Rockport, we'll take it. But...
Well, Phyllis, you got witnesses saying you weren't knocking on doors recruiting.
But I think that the gentleman just really doesn't know...
Procedure.
Yes, I think he doesn't know the proper procedure and I, I think Luke just wants to be sure that the council is behind still accepting annexed property.
Well, he's ready for a good fight. You're ready for a good fight?
Always.
We didn't recruit him, so...
No, if he's, if, you know...
We've never really recruited a piece of...
We've never recruited...
I don't remember recruiting a piece of...
But we've never turned anybody down that want to come into the city. That would be foolish to do that.
Just accused of it.
Right.
Yeah, we've been accused of it.
But, so tell Luke, call the municipal lead?
Do it, go down that, go down that straight in there, illegal road and let's do it.
Let's do it. Okay, now, a phone man. I got a, we have another little packet from a security, from a security system that is questioning our itinerant merchants law. Steve and I talked about this a couple of times. In this particular case, they're selling home security systems.
What got this started? I can't remember. What business came into town, do you remember? What got us to do this?
Well, it was those people that were pulling up on the side of the streets and selling truckloads of mattresses, shoes...
T-shirts.
Yes, yes. And our merchants were getting hurt by it and they asked us to, and that's why we changed things in 2006. But now we've always had a bond in place to protect people when they weren't directly receiving their merchandise. You know, if, if they were selling something that had to be ordered or something, we've always had a bond in place. I, I looked at our...
They're challenging, they're challenging this ordinance based on a New Jersey Supreme Court decision?
Yes. And the thing is, it's the same for everyone. I mean, you know, Stephen forces it across the board. We, we make everybody go through the same procedure. And we're not sure, but we think that this company applied for a business license and when we told them we were going to do, you know, that they were going to have to wait because we did background checks on the people that are doing the selling, that that's when they decided to contact the city attorney. But I, I think, I mean, I, I did not see in their letter that they specifically said that they would sue us.
Where are they, where are they at? What's the company, where's the company from? I don't see that anywhere. It may be in here, but I just, I just... The company that's, the company that's questioning our bond requirement.
Provo-Utah. You're out of Provo-Utah.
Provo-Utah, okay.
But they're not saying we can't do it, they're just saying the bond amount is too high.
They're saying, they're saying...
They're saying...
No, they're saying that the New Jersey Supreme Court, based on the fixed sum needs to be bear relationship because of amount of business they're going to get.
So they're saying that...
Well, we're just telling them we'll take 10% of all the business they do here.
But they're also, they don't, they're not real happy with the, there's a requirement that they have a, a location in the city, which I'm not sure, but they need to have a telephone number where people can call if they have complaints with their product or something. And they're, they're just questioning the whole ordinance. And...
Who wrote the ordinance for us? Who wrote, who wrote the ordinance for us? Was it Mark?
I believe it was Mark. It was in 2006, so I'm pretty sure it was Mark. So this was just for y'all's information.
I, I would probably stand behind that ordinance if, if, you know, I'm sure Mark, Mark does his own work.
But y'all might, you know, just take a look at it and, you know, maybe next month Luke will be able to be here and he can tell y'all. I think he just is trying to avoid a lawsuit if that's possible.
But they're not selling goods, they're selling a service.
Yes.
Whether it's some goods or bonds.
Well, I would have a hard time removing a bond, you know. It's a $5,000 security system and you want a $1,000 down.
You've got people in our own, you've got local people selling security systems.
Right. You know, I'd hate to see people giving them a $1,000 down payment on a security system and then skip town. I'm not saying they would, but you know, I just think we need to protect our citizens.
Well, if they submit to our sales tax law and all that.
I think they are, aren't they, Steve?
Yeah, the way the sales tax, when I'm talking about the other, that might, that might, because they're out of state.
I don't know that one. I really don't. But except for a couple of items for... The...
I know, but that's what I'm saying, right now, it's tax-free.
Except for a couple of agenda items, that's all I have for finance.
Does anyone else have anything for finance?
What was this about the guy donating, whatever, 1030 McKinnon?
Oh. I think that's, that's yours, isn't it, Donnie? 1030 McKinnon?
The building?
That was Highland.
That was Highland Street, it was like 113 Highland Street. The ladies' old building, the building, the city.
It's a little house, it's up for sale, I think it's up for sale on the clear.
It's next to Dr. Mall.
Okay. I don't, I don't know what that is. Oh, and I think he's got a couple of wings that he, y'all want to let him put those on the agenda if, if he's got those ready. I would say yes. I wouldn't know that.
I don't know what the city would do with this house.
We have, we have occupied.
Could you give us a little...
Yeah.
A problem?
We're just two different things there. Or if I find something else, I'll...
Yeah, this, oh, sorry. Yeah, I thought, I just scanned it and I thought this was the house that had been donated to the waste department. But obviously this didn't ring.
They want to do anything on McHenry Street to be rehabilitated, occupied and...
Low income or mill.
Low-income families concession. I don't know if we could flip the house and sell it.
Steve, you want to take that on?
David might, but I don't know. I got an F mine and flipping going on.
Me too.
Well, I will, I will give a copy of this to Steve and let him look at it and he can talk to Luke about it and he can report back on that later.
Does that sound anything that's pressing?
No.
Wings, I would say yes.
But that's all I have for finance?
Anyone else have anything for finance? Entertained motion to adjourn. Second?
Well, I had a question, but I don't...
Oh, you do?
No. Now, does Luke think that this ordinance is, he can, he can defend this ordinance?
I don't know. And I'm thinking that his child must be sick again because when I talked to him Friday, he was planning on being here or not. I really haven't talked to him that much about it except via email. I, I just think he's being cautious right now because we just got out of one lawsuit.
I don't know much about the ordinance in question.
Yeah, and I sent him all the information, which is why I thought that, I thought he was going to be here because I sent him the...
Apparently he's looking for the background on the ordinance. Why don't you put it there to begin with?
Right.
He said I will research the issues before I send the council meeting. Okay. Just wait and ask him. Okay, I saw the weird agenda.
And we have the second reading of the remote access ordinance, the third reading of the water deposit ordinance and the bright edition citizens group. I think what they're looking for from y'all is to say that y'all support the plan to improve the drainage channels that was committed, that Glenn has been working with them on. But I promised Ms. Jasper that she would be on the agenda Monday night. So she's going to be on the agenda Monday night. If I have to stand up and protest in the middle, she's going to be on the agenda Monday night. So, but that, those are the only three things that I have. You may have the wings if Luke has those ready. And that's really all I have.
The group from the planning commission, the young people who did the A and P information would like to be on the agenda. I think it's purely for recognition purposes and maybe put them on the citizens work, you know, to figure or whatever. I'm not sure exactly why they want to come, but they want to come. I told them I'd go ahead and get them on the agenda.
Is this the A and P committee?
No, this is the, the planning commission ran this competition of these high school students.
Okay.
And they put all of these, you may have seen the picture in paper the other day. They had three winners and that, I think they were just wanting some recognition for them. And that was before the picture ever ran in the paper. And so I told them, I had told them earlier before that happened that we would put them on the agenda and they could make whatever presentation they wanted to make.
I'm going to put them on it under House and Planning Commission, rate of admission.
Amazing response they got, the three winners. Two of them from out of county, Ben Mark, Washington.
I mean, with the downtown merchant speaking every month, try to. And they discussed that they have a two-hour parking sign for the downtown area and they feel like that hinders the out-of-town people and they're worried about their parking. And they have no objections if the city council would consider us removing those signs so they don't have to worry about the two-hour parking, so there's not a restriction. I'm not opposed to it. The people that actually violated it the most were some of the merchant people there. I'm not going to go in and write store owner a ticket for parking in front of their store. And so they have worked that out amongst themselves, so there's not an issue. And so I told them that I'd come before y'all and see if you would consider removing the two-hour parking. And if so, you know, I mean, I can go out and just remove the signs. I believe there's like six total. Will that set that one?
I think so. That's what I was just thinking. I think we're going to have to have an ordinance to remove those signs. Maybe not. I mean, if it just says that it's two-hour parking, then we don't have to. But if it says that there will be signs noting it as two-hour parking, then we probably don't have to amend the ordinance. Because y'all don't want to change it where it's not two-hour parking. I mean, you don't want to just revoke the whole ordinance.
No, no, no.
Mike Magness, he's just going to get a grinder and he'll take care of it.
I think that's late. We can make him disappear. He's going to lose his ordinance for that. I couldn't believe the attorney, I think, told the one that wants to lower the bond, made the comment, either amend the ordinance or don't enforce it. That one is a lawyer ever told you, don't enforce. It must be from somewhere around Washington. The attorney must be from around DC.
I don't want to say, okay, we're just not going to enforce the...
We can do it or whatever it is.
I could say that since I've been here since 2009, we have, I mean, the most we've ever done...
He's, he's pissing up.
No, no, no. The most we ever done is find who the owner... No, no, no. The most we've ever done is find who the owner is if that vehicle's been there for an extended amount of time and ask them. I only know of one vehicle since I've been here that we actually towed that was there for almost two weeks.
We stopped the meter raid system...
Long time ago.
Yeah, long, not long after we took the parking meters out. 'Cause the tire marking thing just didn't work.
No, it doesn't go well at all. We don't make many friends.
So do you want me to look at the ordinance and bring it back to you next month? Or do you want, I mean...
Let me, there's no big rest to get this done.
No, no, I just said that I'd bring it to you and make sure to look.
Yeah, let's just see what we have to do. If there is no ordinance.
You'll let us sign the signs.
Yep. That's, that's all I've got.
You got your citizens' wish to appear?
I've got that one. I don't know if there are any or not.
Ms. Jasper and that.
Ms. Jasper, I'm putting in her new business because I think, I think what she's asking is for a vote from the council to approve the plan that she submitted to y'all at the last agenda meeting. Or a vote of confidence for the plan. And I don't have a copy of the plan that she submitted. She, she didn't give me one that night, so...
Like we've all got a copy?
Yeah, she gave, she gave my old captain's version.
We do have somebody we wanted to go for you. No, he's not Luke. You're back?
I don't know if it's her back than him for just a minute here. Most of y'all know me now. I'm Lloyd Parsons from Hall Street. I think we're gonna have to talk. You guys put up with a bunch of crap. You know, yeah, ten percent would be good, you know, for the merchants to come in. If you'll get that, that would be good. Rest of it, you got an attorney. Uh, anyway, on Hall Street, we're doing pretty good. I wanna commend the, the police department for, uh, the, the traffic has slowed down. It's still down. We, we don't have any more people speeding there than we do anyplace else in town. They drive crazy here in your town. So, uh, I was up here on the seventh and I told you I needed a house taken care of. I had to make a phone call 'cause somebody didn't, so I had to make a phone call. Then four hours after I called, they was cleaning it up. They had cleaned up the next day and it was gone. And I told you, if you had a chance to take a look, that was the biggest mess I've ever seen in my life. So if somebody was working on that for me, usually in the city council, you have certain areas that you're responsible for. But if that was your, uh, area, I stepped on your toes if you didn't get it taken care of. But we got a plus on that, too. We had another, uh, house on Hall Street that decided they didn't wanna cut the grass, uh, mentioned it to your code enforcer and, uh, three days it was cut, five days it moved. So we got rid of him, so we don't have a problem. I did request, make a small request, and I don't know how long it's gonna take for this to happen, but I do need it to happen. That's a twenty mile per hour speed limit there, and I've told you that. And it's twenty miles per hour going one direction. We don't have a, a twenty mile per hour sign down at the other end of the street to say that it is twenty, and that's not fair. So I still need a sign. How long does it take to get a, uh, twenty mile per hour sign? Do we have those in stock where they could just put it up or we're not gonna get one? Do we not worry about it or what? I don't know how long it takes to get something like that done. But I figure it should happen pretty soon. Uh, next thing, I shouldn't even bring this up because y'all have been getting pretty hard on drainage. So, uh, I don't know who wants to take a look at this, but at 528 Hall Street, that's the main drainage for, uh, our area right there. And it's plugged up. It goes under a driveway. It's plugged up. We have no drainage except it's just going up to our houses now. Y'all have been talking about drainage, so I don't think I should have brought that up. Anyway, if somebody gets a chance that you have influence over to take a look at that and see if we can get it fixed before the rainy season starts, okay? Police department's doing good. Your code enforcer, uh, jumped in there and really helped us a lot in straightening out our street, making it look better. Uh, I still need a sign. I'd like somebody to... That's working good. Going to be good, okay? If you need me, you know where I live? Thank you very much, guys.
You shake hands?
Keep at it, keep at it.
Just so the city council is aware, I listened to him when he was here last time. I took care of that the very next day at that house. They don't, they can't do it overnight. You know, we had to move the trailer that day to get it out of the roadway and then they had time to do the rest. The second phone call, I don't know what he's speaking about. I think I find out if it's...
Glenn, I'll, uh, call you with that address so you can check the drain on that. Do you have any twenty mile an hour speed limit signs?
I'll have to check our stock room and see. And if we do, that can be put up as...
I mean, I guess we've already made it to twenty mile an hour speed zone. If we, if we got a sign at one end, then, you know, I would assume we've already done that. So we just need to put the sign up at the other end.
He says there's one on the corner, in the western.
So that's why I said we probably already made it. We just need to get signed, put it up.
Years, I don't think.
Uh, the street's not, not in the market. It's thirty miles an hour. So if there's no sign up, it's a thirty mile an hour street.
There is one.
But there is one on the other end.
But not one on the west east end.
So I've never seen it.
Are they there?
So if you're going west, you go thirty if you're going to.
'Cause that street's not much wider than this table.
Yeah, that's true.
And the telephone poles.
It could be worse than Dyers Street.
That's true.
I don't think there's any twenty mile an hour limit on Dyers Street.
And they got, and he's got two pretty good ditches with speed breakers.
Twelve hundred dollars worth damage.
That's what I, that's what I understand. I can't imagine, did you?
Do the thirty mile an hour.
I almost, I almost had a heart attack when we took it there. I was like, oh my God. She said, oh, I thought it was about forty going to a domestic call. Twelve hundred dollars worth damage.
Yeah. It's a deep, you get it much faster than twenty. You're gonna be the front end one, or a front end rebuild.
There's no doubt. We have been more visible to their love.
Aren't there two of those dips?
There's three.
Oh, yeah, there is three. Three. And they're dips. You could fish in them on a rain.
There's one on the corner in Key Street, it's a stop sign.
Right.
So what speed break is it? I don't understand that.
I thought it was drainage, drainage. That's what I thought it was.
You might put up signs for your own protection, twenty mile an hour.
Be aware.
Bear a speed.
Yeah, be aware. Speed dips. I don't know. I mean, they're, they're massive.
They are.
Those can be taken care of.
I like them.
Okay.
There's one of them this bad that I really think one of the power trucks really could be, ta- take a toll if it hit it very hard. So one of them's really massive.
So do we have any other citizens' wish to appear?
I have to have a comment real quick. Um, I'm not gonna stay down.
Okay.
Um, this, either the mayor's office or somebody in the office should be getting a memo this week, that I'm going on maternity leave with the contact information of whoever can take care of any problems. So if the city council needs anything from the library, we've made arrangements, uh, for other staff to take on whatever my duties they can take on. And, uh, and I'll have a staff member bringing me emails and phone messages once a week. So, um, I mean, I hope there's not an issue. But I do know, for instance, we have some, uh, some warrants issued from the, the city attorney has, has done. So if any of that stuff kinda comes, uh, for people not returning library, it's really sad, but it happens. For very large amounts.
That doesn't look good for us.
They're not ten dollar charges, I promise. But, so if there, if there is anything that, that happens, I would just want everybody to know that there is contact information and somebody at the city hall will have it and then my staff will have my contact information, too. So, um, ser- service will not be interrupted at all in my absence and, um, and I wanna make sure that happens. So if there's something that's significant that occurs that my staff can't take care of, don't hesitate to, to ask them to contact me or to give you my contact information. I'd rather it be taken care of swiftly than not taken care of till I come back and there be a bigger issue. So...